You guys move the microphone location.
Good afternoon, my name is Dave Martin. I reside at 2023 16th Street in Cogga Falls, and a 25-year resident of the city of Cogga Falls. I'm concerned with what I perceive to be an agenda to change our school system. Despite recent assertions from our Board President, Superintendent, and much information that has been given out to the community regarding the planned academy-based change to our school system, I didn't find out any information about this school change until I attended an April 2013 meeting at Pollock Middle School. At this meeting, I discovered that there could be some merit to a rumor that this planned change may have an effect on some of our current programs. If, in my opinion, I felt that the Board or the administration had gone out to the community and presented this change early on, they could have discovered that the community's thoughts on this might doom this agenda had they been made aware of some of the feelings of our community. When I take this fact, when I take this into fact and add to it this absolute mad dash push to get these agendas signed into contract, I must say stop. No more until the Board of Education, our Superintendent, gets this agenda out and clear to the community and explains with demonstrated schedules the other options that we may have besides what we feel is a push that we may not agree with. Thank you all for your time. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. And I believe, according to our treasurer, the others, if you marked your subject, none were involving, none of the rest were involving items on the agenda, so we will get our public business out of the way and then we will continue with our public comments at the end of the meeting.
Several of those in attendance tonight are here because of rumors that have been circulating with regard to possible changes to the Cogga Falls City School District Music Program and in particular, the High School Marching Band Program. According to the rumors, the district is considering the elimination of the curricular portion of the marching band program as part of a change to smaller learning communities or interest-based educational delivery model. While I already tried to quell this rumor when I spoke at Silver Lake Elementary April 11th, Pollock Middle School April 15th, and during our May 1st event, the rumor persists. Therefore, I want to be clear that neither I nor the Board are considering or have considered altering the fantastic Cogga Falls City School District Court, District Marching Band Program. The music program has had one of its best years at the state OMEA event in several years, as highlighted at our last Board meeting. The rumor has been troubling, first because we are not planning on changing the program. Another reason is that my family and I love music. Our oldest daughter played in Moonee High School's symphonic band throughout her high school career, and our youngest daughter competed at the state OMEA solo and ensemble contests. So we, and so did the vocal music programs at Walter East Evans High School that I had the opportunity to be the principal of. In fact, part of our appeal to this area for us was the vast opportunities to be, to attend quality concerts in our own neighborhood. Additionally, the Board of Education has been associated with and supported the music program for years. As a strong proponent of the music education program and the Falls program specifically, I would, I would not want to do anything that would harm the program. Therefore, I want to reiterate, we are not planning on disrupting the music, the music program in the Falls. Since there was no truth to the rumor, I have tried to determine how it may have started. It is possible that some individuals have mistakenly reached the conclusion that since Reynoldsburg City Schools may have modified its music program, that the Falls would also consider a change. Normally, one school's decision to change a music program would not lead one to the conclusion that another district would also change its program. However, recently, we have engaged in EdWorks' contract as consultants to help us in the transition to an interest-based system. It is a three-year contract. EdWorks has also worked with more than 50 other school districts in Ohio and in seven other states. Reynoldsburg City Schools has also entered into a contract with EdWorks. However, while Reynoldsburg is a fine school district, any changes we make to our educational program will be made because it makes sense for the Falls, not because Reynoldsburg or any other school district is making the change. Over the next school, school year, we will engage design teams which will be comprised of administrators, teachers, community members, and students. While the contract officially starts in July, the process of engaging teachers has already begun. Last week, a coach for our district was assigned, Dr. Judith Hummel. You may remember her for Summit Education Initiative, and you may also remember her as being the sole superintendent. She engaged to building leadership teams to gauge their hopes, their fears, and their questions. Tomorrow represents the third trip taken by staff and community members to Reynoldsburg. Dr. Hummel, who lives in Akron, plans to be in our high school and middle schools later in the week and next week. We will use all of the information to plan a three-day retreat for secondary school teachers in August, August 12th through August 14th. We also plan to host design team, uh, design team meetings each month all of next school year.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move along to comments from the public. And I'd like to remind everyone, when you come to the microphone, please state your name and address. And first, we have Teresa Stumpy. She must have left, we'll move on.
She was trying to save the news from reading.
Okay, well, we'll move on to the next because we do have a member that has to leave for a meeting, Crystal Spanenberg.
Hi, my name is Crystal Spanenberg, and I reside at 608 Chestnut Boulevard in the Falls. Um, sorry, I'm a little shaky. Um, I'm a, I'm a Falls alumni, a proud former member of the Cogga Falls Band, a resident with small children, and I currently have siblings in this district. I'm extremely concerned with the bullying problem here in our district. It's not a week goes by that I don't hear of another family's problems with this bullying. My own sister was bullied recently to the point of attempting to harm herself, and it was a month before the plan was established to bring her back by the district. Um, my family, as well as the hospital staff, were appalled by this as a plan to bring a student back is supposed to be already established. I feel our children are harming themselves because they are being bullied by children who are taking an example of our Superintendent, who is bullying our community.
Ms. Spanenberg, I'm going to ask you to not use insults or personal attacks against employees or the Board.
Okay, I was just wondering what our plan for next year is for any kind of bullying, new programs to start in the, in the district?
Um, as far as new programs, I'm not aware of any. If, if you would like to contact Rachel Mustard, she is very involved in, um, one of our Guidance Councils that can probably direct you to and inform you about some of the programs that we will be operating.
Okay.
And if you want to even afterwards, come up and I can get you her contact information.
Okay, um, yeah, these people have been contacted, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next, um, I'd like to call Callie Alvis.
Callie Alvis had to go to another Board meeting, and she gave me, if it's okay, if I just read what she wrote or him, I just fill out a form and read it, I'm also a Cogga Falls resident.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind filling out a form and, with your name and address and all that. And we will then next call Chris Wilcoxon.
My name is Chris Wilcoxon, I reside at 141 Burchwood Avenue. I pretty much am born and raised here in Cogga Falls, and I want to give my applaud to the Board of Education for moving forward and investigating some new options and some streamlined technologies and ways to, um, better educate our kids. I had no problem finding the information prior to a meeting that I went to. Um, I went right to EdWorks and downloaded it, printed it out. Any question I could have had seemed very reasonable and was answered in there. Um, I think this is a prime time for us in Cogga Falls to reach out and grasp the idea of an academy. It just seems like it triples the opportunities. Um, they're unlimited, um, more businesses are involved, more of the students have a choice in what they want to make a decision. I'd rather have us make a, a bad decision working through high school for your career than spending all my money in college, Jack, you know what I mean? I'd rather, I'd rather watch you grow as a young man making your good tough decisions. Um, I asked the community to stand up and challenge themselves and take a look right here. I went for the PowerPoint presentation and I, I did not get that information because there were way more concerns from the community. And I sat and listened, and man, there's some tough things going on. There's a lot of tough things going on in Cogga Falls, but a lot of good things going on in Cogga Falls. All the information was right here. If you walk up any of these people, I feel they'd be more than happy to take a minute and answer any question we have. Again, I applaud you and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcoxon. Next, we have Jennifer McKenna.
My name is Jennifer McKenna, I live at 2718 8th Street, and I'd like to talk about some concerns I have about the nature of communications that I've seen coming from the Board and the district. I find a lack of respect for different viewpoints in it, for people who disagree with the vision being stated, and I'd like to see more of a willingness to believe that people who disagree or voiced doubts or even opposition are still people that want what's best for our kids, even if they have a different idea of what that looks like or how we get there. I'd like to see more open lines of communication, one that listens to and responds to questions and concerns from all stakeholders, and values substance over appearance. A glossy newspaper insert that glosses over real information is not enough. I want a simple explanation of the vision, why it is the best possible fit for our community, the specifics that's being taken to achieve it. There are a lot of people in this community who are very passionate, we see a lot of them here today, and if you can get us behind you, if you can engage us and really, really reach us, we can do something really awesome for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Next, Linda Martin.
My name is Linda Martin, and I reside at 2023 16th Street in Falls. I primarily want to address the EdWorks issue, which a lot of people are here for, um, especially academies. I have two kids in the system, one is in middle school and the other is a freshman in high school, which will directly affect them. I do not understand why there has been such a lack of information, um, on details prior to the approval of the contract with EdWorks. There are students that do not understand, my child comes home concerned every day, wondering how this is going to affect him. I know the, the students have asked teachers and the teachers cannot give them answers. Why is this? This should have been done last year, these academies specifically brought out instead of having, after the fact, after the money's already been spent, that parents are angry and upset about this. I personally cannot explain how these academies work for my children. Any questions I have got beside the vague flyers, the questions that I've had about where can I find information on this, I've been directed to the Reynoldsburg website. Why, as a parent, should I be going to another school's website to find information for our community of what possibly might be going on in our community in the future? And why hasn't this information been provided again before the contract was signed? There has been, I have personally asked the question of how many parents have gone to Reynoldsburg on these trips so they can be included as part of the community to look at how these academies work? Members of the community, well, as far as I understand, no parents were involved at work, possibly involved with the school district. I had asked that at the Board meeting. And nor did I receive any follow-up on that question. Why is it so hard to get this information? Um, the gentleman to the fore had gotten a booklet from EdWorks. Why couldn't he get it from our, you know, Board of Education Superintendent, whoever has been in charge of this? I myself have made that effort, and I got 11 attachments, actually 12 attachments, from Reynoldsburg talking to Dan Hoffman to find out information. Some of it is one-page, some of it is twelve-page. Why isn't it available to us directly from our own site? Um, as a matter of fact, I am going on a trip tomorrow to Reynoldsburg, but that was only due to speaking to the EdWorks coordinator, and he invited me on this trip with you guys. I was not invited directly from anyone in our community.
Okay, Ms. Martin, I'm going to have to start this faculty at any second. Thank you very much. It's Christy Lofus.
My name is Christy Lofus, and I live at 2315 Shaw Avenue. Um, I have some concerns about this academy program. I did not realize until maybe an hour ago that you guys had already approved a contract to be signed. This directly affects my children, I have three, one being a freshman. I find it very offensive and disrespectful that we weren't educated further as parents as to what was going on. The fact that this one parent got a pamphlet from EdWorks, but you couldn't make sure us parents that you were going to affect with this decision gets this pamphlet unacceptable. Is this program, one of my main questions for you, is this program even acknowledged by colleges outside of the state of Ohio? I have personally contacted Arizona State University and Colorado State University. Neither one of them know what this program is. How can you teach my children something and expect them to be able to go out to the colleges of their dream, not yours? They don't dream of Ohio dreams, they dream of Arizona, Colorado, Washington State, and yet these schools don't even know what you're talking about. I find that laughable, I'm sure you would too. Reynoldsburg admits that lower academic students get passed through the loops because they're not higher grade. Me, as a parent, I have one student that is 4.0 grade point average. Great, you won't miss him in the process. But my child, who is struggling with a 2.5, what are you going to do for him? How are you not going to miss him when Reynoldsburg has already admitted that they're missing those children? How are you going to stop that in advance of starting this program? That's my question to you, Ms. Patterson.
Thank you, are we finished?
Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Nichols. Okay, next up would be Caleb Weatherby.
My name is Caleb Weatherby, I'm a junior at Cogga, Cogga Falls High School. Um, I reside at 107.
You don't have to give your address, we're in a studio.
Okay. Um, the following was taken directly from a particular section of the Cogga Falls School website. To save time, I'll summarize it by saying that the focus area of those who run our education system say that family, business, and community involvement is their main area of focus. They say they want to continuously evaluate and improve all opportunities for family, family involvement, continuously evaluate and improve the involvement of family, business, and community groups, and continuously evaluate and improve communication methods. Communication and community involvement does not seem to be the focus area, but it needs to be. For example, in Student Council, we communicate with each other what our goal is, when it needs to be accomplished, and most importantly, how we are going to work together to achieve the goal. As the elected president of Student Council next year, I can tell you that respect, trust, and support are three crucial elements in being a successful leader. I'm afraid to say that those running our district do not have the respect, trust, and support from our, our community. I'm not boasting and saying that I'm an experienced leader because I'm only 16 and I'm still maturing in learning. However, I feel that if there's anything that I've learned, it is that you need support as a leader. You cannot bear the burden on your own. As you can see here, I have a few Student Council members who are here to support what I have to stand for. So when you want to start something new in a district where new things such as 90/10 failed recently, you should not present it as signed, sealed, and delivered, but as an opportunity for parents, teachers, and new ideas and suggestions to place some of the work of our own district. Let the people have their input on what is being changed in the district. Maybe there will be more support behind these new ideas and suggestions if the number actually matched the talk. It is my understanding that the community is confused on what is being changed in the district. As being in charge of this district, you must communicate in a more clear and efficient way so that everyone understands the situation. For far too long, we have been hidden from the truth and told to conform to the popular ideologies of those who run our education system. Our school district does not belong to Columbus, our school district does not belong to Washington, our school district does not belong to a few selected, selected leaders, it belongs to us, the citizens of Cogga Falls, and it is time we educate ourselves and express our voice accordingly. Thank you.
Ryan Hillier.
Hello, my name is Ryan Hillier, I am also a student at Cogga Falls High School. I will begin with a quick synopsis of who I am and what I've done in the past four years of my high school career. I'm a member of the Cogga Falls Tiger Marching Band and have served, has served as an officer this past year. I was also a co-captain of the cross-country team, which I ran for for four years. I participated in a jazz ensemble, which meets at 7:00 AM before school two days a week. I'm a state-level swimmer and served as co-captain of the swim team for my last two years. In addition to the high school team, I was a member of the YMCA Tiger Shark Swim Team, and through this, I qualified for YMCA Nationals three years in a row. Throughout my time at Cogga Falls, I held a spot on the honor roll, maintained a cumulative GPA of a 3.7, took enriched in AP classes, and have been on the National Honor Society for two years. Successes in my life are not my own. Every teacher, parent, and coach has had some impact on who I am today. Through the sports, I've learned hard work and dedication, which helped me achieve anything I set my mind to. Core classes have been the basis for my future learning, and they help me to decide what I would like to do in my future. My electives like art, Latin, AP World History, and piano have opened my mind to what my creativity can offer the world. The band program, another medium for my creativity, not only could it teach me music, but I also learned how to work with others to create a masterpiece. And, and I was shown leadership by the directors, how to teach and respect everyone with integrity and keep everyone focused on the common goal. Next year, I will be enrolled at the Ohio State University studying landscape architecture, where I continue, hope to continue my participation in sports, further my education in music, and continue my, to explore my skills in art. I was given a comprehensive and open education at this high school, and as I am an example of the success of this style, I feel the need to protect it. But I also know this style does not work for everybody. That is the focus of my point. It has worked so well for me, and I can imagine the academy will work just as well for others. But to benefit as many people as you can, I feel that we need to have an open mind. There are so many caring and intelligent people in this community and the students, and in order for a new program to have the best impact it can on the community, there needs to be involvement with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Next is Victoria Cox. She left. She left. Okay, then we'll move on to, I believe this is Natalie Francis.
I'm a little sloppy.
Sorry, that's.
My name is Natalie Francis, I reside at 1762 17th Street, I am a alumni of Cogga Falls. Um, my husband is also, both my children go to Falls, I was in the marching band and currently I'm in the alumni band. Um, I wanted to bring everybody to attention to 2005 when we had the budget crisis due to our treasurer not being able to correctly have it subtracted. At that time, our city had an emergency levy and the teachers suspended their raises. This year, um, I believe next year, the teachers' raises will actually be on the agenda. I'm not convinced that we have our budget under control enough and that a teacher's strike is very possible. I wanted to know if the members have this on their radar or if they are aware of it. I also want to voice my concern on the city not passing the levy. The Board was quoted in saying that they feel very good about the levy, and I personally feel that this is an example of how our current Board is actually out of touch with our community, our hardworking parents, and our taxpayers. I have current, I have current concerns about the President and Superintendent actually being quoted using maybe derogatory comments about the PTA and the teachers. I do not feel this is the way to get the votes. I suggest that we start sharing more specifics about the Reynoldsburg Initiative with the community, more than just saying, get on the Reynoldsburg bus. I unfortunately have not been able to get on that bus or attend any meetings as I do work full-time and then I have soccer and softball and baseball with my children. Um, I also, with all that going on, don't have time to look up a booklet and look up PDFs. I really feel that it is the school board and Superintendent's job to provide us parents with that information. Um, I also feel upset that the Reynoldsburg Initiative has actually been signed and sealed without any community input, and I feel that I should have an input in my child's future. In closing, I feel the current President, Superintendent, to be more respectful with speaking to or about PTA teachers, parents, and community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Next is Carla Moll. She's not here, is she?
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to Donna Jennings. Steve Subicen.
Steven Subicen, 3203 Saunders Street, I'm a resident in the Falls, and I hope I'm familiar to some of you here. First of all, Dr. Nichols, School Board, Superintendent, and the rest of the community. I have two comments, and I forward those to Dr. Nichols or the Board to review. The first one was a comment on the description of the academy program. I've had a long-term experience in teaching, probably at least 10 years of college and some high school, and I have a couple of comments that I would like to make. First is, my experience in Milwaukee is that academy programs are run with very solid academic programs in place and things are aligned first. And I'm talking from a school district called Greendale, which has been in the top 50 of schools, in the Milwaukee area of schools, which are nationally playing in a good area. I do not think, and it's my opinion, that those ducks are in the line. It is something that makes good and great school systems even better. So I think maybe you're missing the vote, I do not think that there's an alignment there. But I would, as the community is said, and many people fault the community, because I'm not a stranger here, I have spoken to many people here about the academy and the alignment of this type of program. I've looked at the websites and have done my own research, and I'm not in a, in favor or alignment that I think you've gone extremely too fast with, as the young gentleman, who's just a fantastic young man, as I mentioned earlier, a certain degree of lack of respect in communication with the. in communication with the community at large. And as you said, you're the coach, Dr. Nichols, of this community, and I think the team would say you took a throttling on this looking for the board and the community, too. It was an off-cycle election where normally your best suspenders and your best supporters show up, and you took a beating from the people who should have supported you the most. The second, what is probably a more serious question, is the economic impact of the levy, what your plans are. You weren't ready to go with a backup levy if this were an emergency that you could have had, I think, posted. And I was wondering, if it were an emergency, how that's going to play out. And last but least, education over the years has been self-serving, self-rewarding to the programs throughout, not only the state of Ohio, but nationwide. We fall into probably forty-third in enrolled grades of schools on all academic measures. We have not done our self-service just as a community and as a country. And we are trying to struggle to get back to where we were. This is an uphill climb, I'm aware of it, but it doesn't excuse us. And that is my few words, and I'd like to thank you. I would hope that you could grant Dr. Nichols perhaps one-year extension to continue on and to see how his efforts would go out. Thank you.
Next would be Julie Gray.
Hello, my name is Julie Gray. My address is three oh-six Ashland Avenue here in Cogge Falls. I am reading a letter from Cali Office. And it says, "Good evening, Dr. Nichols and Cogge Falls School Board members. As a parent, I try to teach my boys that character and integrity are an important part of becoming a responsible grown man. I have tried to instill in them the importance of what they say and that their words once spoken can never be taken back, only apologized for. I have also tried to teach them that integrity is not how they behave when people are watching them, but rather what they say and do when no one is paying attention. I have been very disappointed over the past few weeks to find out that our superintendent and members of our Board of Education have not behaved with character or integrity, which has been evidenced by the emails exchanged and correspondence written in regards to a parent who asked questions just trying to understand the Board of Education's actions on a major decision that was not well-appreciated or expressed. A concerned parent who wants to understand how its child's education will be affected by the changes that were not unanimously voted on by the Board is just that, a concerned parent. They are not hot stewards, do not hold to an agenda for anyone, and certainly not looking to smear anyone's name. The school district is in trouble when parents quit asking questions and let the elected leadership act with too large a path of discretion and have no checks and balances. Also, we have a wonderful staff and teachers in Cogge Falls School District. Many have gone above and beyond to help my children understand a concept, finish a project, or work through a personal issue. They are creative, intelligent, and capable. They can be the strongest ally of an administration. They do not need to be led by forces with bits in their mouth. They work with our children every day. They know where we are as a district and what we're lacking. They also know where we are excellent in making progress in this district. Why not empower them to empower our parents? I'm not saying that we shouldn't stick with the status quo or avoid change and pretend that there are not issues in our schools. I'm aware that there needs to be changes, changes that need to work within our community, changes that are studied, discussed, and implemented with our district in mind. If we all work together, Cogge Falls City Schools can be more than an excellent with distinction district, but a district that is run well with everyone buying in. I truly do not feel that this is possible with the current administration's attitudes and condescending approach to parents and staff alike. And on a personal note, I would just like to say I would hope that the board would go after the meeting tonight and reflect on what's being said and take it to heart and maybe change directions or at least reevaluate how it's being pursued.
I would like to clarify one thing you just said, that it wasn't a unanimous vote. The Edwerks' proposal was a unanimous vote.
Well, that's really sad.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carol Hillier. I would like to introduce myself because I think it adds a little value. I've got three kids in the district. They've come up through kindergarten. And I've been involved in all three schools, so elementary, middle school, and now the high school. What I would like to say is, wow, you've got my attention. I respect the energy and focus in pursuit of excellence. However, I would like you to consider the process. We have, we... Please consider community involvement. We have excellent staff, teachers, students. But also, we need to involve property owners, alumni, businesses, other like-school districts, and finally, our successes. Is this process fully vetted or is it transparent? Are we considering positive and negative factors for students, teachers, staff, and property owners? All I would like to say in conclusion is, can we slow down? It took my son and our family to consider schools for nearly two years to come to our decision. Thank you.
Lastly, we have Teresa Dumphy. If she's made it back in the room.
Yes. Good evening. Over recent months, the school district has made it clear
Teresa Dumphy, twenty-eight forty-nine Lee Road, Silverlake.
Again, I'll start over. Over the recent months, the school district has made it clear that it wants and expects more for its students, from above. As a parent of four children in this district, I'm happy to see an academic focus. Like many, I've been saddened to see declining ratings even before the implementation of the new state report card, which we've long been warned will result in lower ratings. But how you address change is every bit as important as what you change. A focus on college and career readiness is worthwhile, as is addressing growth in elementary grades, as is delivery of services to exceptional students both gifted and special needs, as is improving security and technology for our students. Significant changes require broad support from staff, students, parents, and the community at large. Input from these constituencies was sorely lacking in the eight-week period between when Cogge Falls visited Reynoldsburg and when it voted on a nearly $350,000 contract to change seven-to-twelve education within this school district. I'm deeply disturbed by the banter among school leaders regarding a parent's inquiry about implementation of the cavity concept. I'm disturbed by comments made to parents who attended meetings to learn more about impending changes. I'm disturbed by comments about the staff holding the staff's reins. And I'm disturbed by the changes to tonight's agenda that prevented people who came here to comment from being heard. Respect is a two-way street. Without giving it to the very people who support this district through their time, talents, and treasure, it's difficult to get respect in return. The lack of judgment shown in creating these public records makes it very difficult for us to have faith and respect for district leadership in other areas. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comments, so we will...
I'm sorry, I'm back.
And you are?
Victoria Cox.
Yeah, Dr. Nichols, please go ahead.
Go ahead, come on up, Victoria. Let her go last, and then I'd like to address some of them as well.
I'm Victoria Cox, new homeowner, seventeen twenty-six Twenty-third Street. And I just wanted to say I have a daughter here who's now, "Futures in your hands," or new to this school district. We come from another one, a different county way. And I don't think that I will continue to be a resident. My home's going back on the market. I will vote... Because I don't feel confident in the district, I've never been more afraid for my child's education than I have in this one year in this school district. And I'm so sorry about that. I graduated from here, so do my fiance. Kind of boring raised, and I'm sad. I'm sad that I have to leave. And I'm sad that I had to worry about something like her education. It really hurt me to see this, to see where I came from in Cogge Falls to where it is today. So going through it and where it is, I can appreciate and respect the business side of it, but as a community and a parent side of it, I'm just deeply saddened by where it is today. And I don't have much else to say other than my feelings. So, thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Dr. Nichols?
Yeah, and to some degree, I'm going to speak from the heart here. As you know, I am also a resident of this community and have my most prized possession. I want nothing but for this district to get better academically, financially, and all of the above. The comments with regard to bits in the mouth and things that have been posted, certainly, you wish you could take some of those back. However, "bits and mouthpiece" was a specific reference to the feeling that it was going very fast. You know, this is the first time in my career that I've felt like we, up till April eleventh, that we had a lot of momentum that I needed to hold it back and slow it down. And because there was a lot of things going on at the same time, it was a very difficult spring with the levy, vision, bomb threats, position changes, restructuring, pending negotiations with two different associations. It just became very, very stressful. We have a three-year contract with Edwerks. Edwerks are our consultants. As I mentioned earlier, they work in more than fifty different school districts in eight different states. No two of them are exactly alike, nor will we be exactly like Reynoldsburg. We are going to engage, we've already begun engaging our staff in the alignment piece that Mr. Subicen referenced in terms of having the academic pieces in line so that we can deliver an interest-based system. We're going to take our time, and we're going to engage you all in that process. The contract doesn't even start officially until July one. So that's where we got the cart in front of the horse a little bit, and I'll take responsibility for that. It is about process. And our Business Advisory Council have been engaged in this process for two years. And we've gotten to this point. I also want to address an email that I sent on April fourteenth, 2013, that was posted on Facebook page recently. In the email, I was not as professional as I should have been. The email concerned the district academic standing in Summit County and rumors associated with the music program that I addressed earlier. I, too, am frustrated with regard to our position in Summit County relative to the new Ohio Department of Education standards and the standards that exist in the marketplace. And my frustration with my inability to quell the rumors regarding music program. With the greater expectations that are being placed on students and the district by the Ohio Department of Education and employers in general, I was and remain concerned for our kids' ability to compete. That concern and my frustration regarding the district's standing and the banned rumors were not reflected as best as I could have in my email. Although it was an email between me and one other person and was intended to be a private email conversation, going forward, you have my word that every email I send regarding the district, whether it's between me and one other person or from me to numerous people as the district superintendent, will reflect a professional tone. That's everything that I do going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. And I echo much of what he said. I have always been open and honest and transparent with the public, and I have always welcomed public input. And I've always put every piece of information out there that I can that was made available to me. This contract hasn't even started. There is no public being left out.
We signed it.
We signed a contract.
We signed it!
Like we did many contracts tonight. It's a contract to start something with a company. It's not anything that's been started. Moving on. Board Business, Item J. Are there any future agenda items? This is not a board meeting here. This is not for public participation in this part. Thank you. Next item under Board Business. Did not hear anybody bring up any future agenda items. Are there any? Okay. I would like to move... One moment, please. I would like to move that the Board of Education approve an extension of Dr. Nichols' contract for four years as superintendent at an annual salary of $120,000 effective August first, 2014, through July thirty-first, 2018. I have a second. Is there any discussion? No, ma'am.
This is not noticed on your agenda?
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to leave if you keep interrupting our board meeting.
Are you allowed to vote without one board member? I'm sorry, I don't know.
Is there any discussion? Here, ma'am, please call the law.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mrs. Gunter?
Yes.
Mr. Rump?
Aye.
Mr. Petty?
Aye.
Motion approved, four-zero.
Bye, guys.
Done.
actual meeting. Thus, the exception of our board members in the meeting is not yet. The next regular scheduled Board of Education meeting is Monday, June 17, 2013, 5:00 p.m. in the Herald-Eagle meeting. The copy of an unofficial Board of Agenda is on the table. After the meeting, citizens are welcome to review the motion.
They should be. Second last thing, Thomas, we request a board announcement.
Well, the rest are...
No, that was not on the agenda.
All right. Excuse me. All right.
I wish the other people that walked out the board would have stayed. You know, I've been a 43-year resident now of Coggin Falls. Many of you remember me. There were people in this room that had me as a, as a principal at the high school. There were people that have worked for me in various ways as I was business manager and so on. Now, I only say that because I feel I've got a pretty good idea of this community and our school district, which some people would question, especially maybe some of the people that left. I don't know. It's not important at this point because that's their choice. All right? But I can tell you this. I want to reflect back over those, those 43 years, and I've worked for and with 11 superintendents. And the granddaddy of them all was Dr. Harold Wilson. All right? He was an outstanding superintendent, still around in the community. All right? And I go from him all the way down to one guy who lasted one day. I walked over to meet this guy, I was a high school principal, and he had already left and resigned. So, you know, I've been through all of that. I've seen some great superintendents. I've seen some other ones who struggled. There were superintendents that were bought out. There were superintendents that, that were not renewed. All right? So this brings me then to our Board of Education situation. And when we started to look for a superintendent here, I said and told the board, I will do everything possible to find out about this person who is going to be our final one or two candidates. And this I did. I went out to Ucyrus, and I spent an entire day in Ucyrus, not only talking to Dr. Nichols and also watching him interact with his staff, which was not certainly set up in any way at all. I watched him as he walked into buildings, and people would come up to him instead of waiting for him to come to them. I was impressed by that. I went out into the community, and I, I listened to people. I asked people, what do you think? What do you think of this guy? And nothing, there was, everything was positive. And the thing that I wanted was somebody who would interact with our community and understand our community. And when he said, you know, I want to move to your community, that was a big plus for me. To find a superintendent who wanted to not only guide us, but to live in our community was a big plus. So I went along with that, and I was 100% in, in favor. To this day, we have a superintendent, and it's the first superintendent in many, many years that this district has had, that has devoted his life to teaching and learning, to curriculum change. And that's what we're talking about in this whole process. It's something new. Yeah. Every time you try something new, I can remember trying something new at the high school. I mean, I, you're always going to get something that's gonna be controversial because there are some people that are going to say, ah, you know, we don't want any change. Well, folks, if you're second last in Summit County to only academia, we gotta do some kind of change. Now, I don't care if it's gonna be, you know, the economy or whatever, but we can't remain status quo. Now, now, wait a minute, please. I am talking.
Please stop interrupting. I'm gonna ask you to leave.
I didn't interrupt you when anybody out there was talking. I didn't interrupt. I don't... But you're not listening. No. I want to talk first, and then we can listen. We listen to all the comments. Just listen to me, all right? And you can, you can chew me up whatever way you want to later, but just listen, all right? What I'm saying is, is that we have a man that is dedicated to curriculum change. And yes, you might not agree with some of these concepts, all right? I know we're going to do a good job of getting the message out there and talking to people. What, where were all the people when this man went out and, and talked about some of these concepts when he was promoting the levy? Very few showed up. All right? So we need, yes, we need to do this. We need to, we need to, we need to do this, and we need to get out and explain it to people and all of that. I don't know if we'll convince any of you people that are still here or some of the people that left. Probably not. Maybe we will. You know, I hope and pray we will all come together. But I can tell you right now that I fully support this four-year contract for Dr. Nichols because he is a good man, and he's gonna lead our district. And I, I fully believe this because of the research that I have done, and I'm speaking only for myself. I'm not speaking for this entire board. So you can take it whichever way you want to. So that's all I have to say, but it's, it's very disturbing to see, and I know it's disturbing for you people out there too, to see this community, you know, be ripped apart over something like this that hasn't even started yet. We gotta give things a chance. There's gonna be a lot of adjustments, and I'll bet you that you won't see 10% of the Reynoldsburg program here. You're gonna see a Coggin Falls program, which is different. But I, I'm, I'm really hopeful that we're going to help kids grow, and we're gonna move up the ladder from where we are. That's, that's my goal, ma'am. Thank you for listening, for all of you that did.
Thank you, Mr. Rump. Mrs. Gunter?
Well, I don't know quite where to start. Seems like I left spring break and I came back to just a great big mess. Couldn't figure out where I got, how it got started. How did it get started? All of a sudden, all these rumors are just blowing off in the community. How did it get started? I had no idea. I think most of us in this room are aware that a Facebook page is out there, and I think most of us in this room are aware of the information that's on that Facebook page, including information regarding Dr. Nichols' contract. So it's, it's no secret to most people in here that, yes, this board has been in negotiations with Dr. Nichols for a new contract for some time now. So it shouldn't be surprising that we would actually come to a conclusion. What confuses me the most is all the people that have showed up here, yet I've received one email with regard to the academies. One. One. I've not received any phone calls. I've not received any people speaking to me on the street, whether they're against it. Yet all these people here, generally, if there's an issue within the district, as board members will hear about it, especially through emails. We didn't get any email. Kind of makes you wonder how it all got started. It got started with a public records request? Well, these are just some of the public records requests that I've had to make in my tenure as a board member, just to get the information that I needed to do my job because another board member wanted to make sure I didn't have the information to do my job. It's not easy to sit up here and make decisions. I know a lot of you think it is, and you know three seats are open. Come sit on this side of the table and see what it's like. And when you, when a Facebook page gets started up and, and the finger is pointed at you, see how you feel about it. I think the right man is in the job, and that is supported by my vote.
That's it. Thank you. And of course, I echo much of what I've heard here this evening regarding Dr. Nichols and his stellar performance for us. And I just want to say that, you know, I, when I first came back on the board, you know, I was, you know, curious how it would go with a new superintendent and knowing that our treasurer was leaving as well and had applied elsewhere before I came back on, I was a little concerned for where our district was gonna go and what, what would happen here in Coggin Falls. I, you know, I, change is hard for everybody, whether it's what we're gonna do with education or whether it was changing employees and getting what, what felt to me at the time almost an entirely new administrative office. And, but I've been so pleased since May of last year, we've done nothing but make strides forward. You may have noticed that over the last year, this board has not been in the paper for the issues of previous years. There's been no infighting. There's been no agenda... There's been no personal agendas being pushed through at the detriment of our students. There's been peace and harmony, and we are making strides. We're, we're going places, and I'm excited about where we're gonna be going. And it's not a trip that we're taking alone with these five board members up here and these few administrators. This is a trip that the entire staff, students, parents, and community is going to be involved in, but nothing has started yet. People are asking for answers to what's a class schedule gonna look like. We're not nearly that far yet. We're not nearly that far. There's so much planning ahead before anything even gets started. And that's something that I think everybody needs to keep in mind before you want to keep tearing us apart on Facebook pages with unfounded rumors. Much of what is being said on there is not true. And the various websites removing the links to that, I think, speaks for itself in the validity of an anonymous page putting false information up and using emails that have been cut and pasted to give an impression that something nefarious was going on, when that wasn't the case at all. When you have the emails in their entirety, you will see that it was two people that were frustrated after having spent two weeks or more trying to stop these rumors and telling people it wasn't true and band wasn't going to be dismantled, just to have the same people come and ask again and again. So, you know, there, there, there was nothing to tell anybody because nothing has been planned yet. And the rumors about band being canceled or dismantled or made an extracurricular, they were false, and they were started for a reason. But, you know, I just want to say in Dr. Nichols' defense that I, I think it's shameful what many in this community did to him with that page over the weekend. He didn't deserve it. He didn't deserve to have his career smeared like that. And I guess how I said it to this gentleman in a, in an email, in a message, I'm sorry, was, was best, was how I said it best, I think. Dr. Nichols has a plan, a purpose, a vision, and the drive and determination to get us there. And, and I believe those words. And as, as far as this board goes, I believe that we will be keeping our eye on the prize, and we'll continue doing what we've been doing. I can't think of anything more constructive than five people with an attitude that all kids matter and that what's good for all kids is good for all of us. So that's all I have to say on that matter.
Could I just add something? Can I have?
Certainly, ma'am.
When, when we addressed Todd's contract, one of the things that he, that he brought to the board were, were 10 points that he said to us, if I achieve these things, I feel that I've, that I've made, I've made a statement in my leadership. And we said, we said, Todd, you've set the bar too high. One of those was if the performance index is part of the achievement component of a local report card, which we know where we are right now, is an A. Not a C this year, and a B next year, and an A next year, but an A. And we said, Todd, don't you want to make that a little bit more realistic? That's where he has set the bar for himself, and that's where he has set the bar for this district. If we don't achieve an A, then I haven't done my job. One of those was the overall value added. Was it phased in, maybe? Make a little, little growth this year, maybe a little next year? He set it at an A. That's where he has set his vision, his scope, his drive, his enthusiasm, his efforts. And that's what he expects of himself, and that's what we, that's what we think we're getting out of him. And I don't think it's funny. I, I don't think it's funny. We've gone over, we've gone over and over and over this. Some, some of his goals were fiscal, very difficult in what's going on in our economy. It was described by outsiders as, as way outside the box. This hasn't been done before. This is this whole approach to performance-based, which we're all going through, our teachers, our principals. This was his standard for himself. And we, we even use the word revolutionary, but it's not to be right now. So, you know, maybe he's a step ahead of us, but that's where he has set the bar for his students and for this district. And that's why he's got my support in this contract.
Mr. Petty, should we point out that Dr. Nichols removed those issues from his contract?
Indeed, he did.
Okay. Is there any further discussion or any comments or...
I just, you know, I'd just like to add one more thing that I sat here to talk about. It's so ironic because I started my career, not in Coggin Falls, unfortunately, but I started my career as a band director. And when I first came to Coggin Falls as a principal, I got some criticism because he's gonna, he's gonna side on the side of music all the time instead of sports or whatever. While I was, you know, I played sports in high school. But anyway, now we turn around, and all of a sudden, this guy is not supporting music? Why in the world would I not support band and marching band and all the instrumental music program since that's what my original background was? And my kids all came to the program and everything else. So that, that particular part of it is sort of, sort of ironic. Anyway, so, for what it's worth.
Go ahead, and then I will.
Go ahead.
I just have one more thing to say is, June 4th is graduation, and we have 348 kids walking across the stage to receive a diploma that they have worked 13 years to get, that their parents have spent 13 years supporting them to reach that moment. I hope that this year, we can let it be their day, let it be their night, and not let it be about something else. That's it.
And, and I just want to throw money to Mr. Rump, kind of reminded me, and I'm, I'm also, I'm an alumni band member, and I'm also friends with a lot of people on Facebook. And what I found most disturbing about all of it was, was you kept feeding into the frenzy, you kept feeding fuel to the fire. Not, one person messaged me about it and, and asked for information straight from somebody that was actually involved in the situation. One person out of all of you on that page. And, and I see a lot of faces in here that are on that page. And, you know, I, I find it amazing that it was easier to listen, no, I, I find it shameful that it was easier to spread rumors through anonymous people that you had no idea what they were talking about, saw several requests for the entire emails to be posted, yet they never were. And you should be ashamed of yourselves for listening to rumors and gossip on anonymous Facebook pages instead of trying to get the information from people who knew what was going on there. And I, I guess that's all I have to say about that. I move for adjournment. Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, please call the roll.